Hearing, this is April the 16th at 4:00 PM in council chambers. And I do understand that there are some people at the back who are standing. We have had, we're holding this meeting in this room for two reasons. One, we've been here at several other meetings today, starting at nine o'clock. And second thing is that this is being broadcast on Granica, so anyone who is at home can pay attention to this and can go on Town of Asouis website and go on this and listen to it in real time and see it. So those are the reasons. So I apologize for the people who are in the hallway. You'll have to poke your head around. There's one more chair up here beside Andrew if you wish to come in and sit down. So I will call the meeting to order and I will read the statement of the chair first. This public hearing is convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act, RSBC 2015, to allow the public to make representation to council respecting matters contained in zoning amendment bylaw number 1085 dot 105 2018, 2018. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your own views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public meeting, hearing, is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, presentation by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After the public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may without further notice give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. Now, the advertisement of advertising and posting requirements, notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the community charter by distributing the notice as follows. Publishing in two consecutive editions of the Asouis Times on April the 4th and April the 11th, placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the town hall, Planning and Development Services Department on April the 3rd, and posting the notice on the town's website on April the 3rd, and distributing via e-news on April the 3rd. So I have confirmed that the advertising and posting requirements have been met. Before we start the bylaw, I have, I have agreed with Mr. Remanko that he will intervene if there are presentations that come up that do not deal with the bylaw as we have outlined it. And at the end of our meeting, after everyone has spoken, Ms. McKay and Mr. Remanko will outline some next steps. In other words, what will happen after this public hearing has ended. So I will now ask Ms. McKay to, to give her report, please.
Thank you, Mayor McCourtoff. Thanks, everyone, for coming out today. So this report went to council on March 19th, 2018, as an update to the zoning bylaw. Background information is as follows. The Town of Asouis zoning bylaw, 1085, was adopted in 1998, and since that time, there have been several changes in provincial legislation and policy which are not reflected in the current bylaw. Zoning bylaw reviews are usually preceded by an official community plan review or update. Recognizing this, the Town of Asouis has included an OCP review in the 2017 to 2020 business plan. OCP reviews typically take anywhere between one to two years to complete. Town staff have identified a few areas within the zoning bylaw that could benefit from updating prior to the review of the OCP and subsequent overall update of the zoning bylaw. The following section provides an overview of the information proposed in the updates and amendments, along with corresponding rationale for those proposals. The first section is on supportive recovery. So according to the National Survey in Drug Use and Health, 21.5 million Americans battled a substance use disorder in 2014. The World Health Organization estimates the global burden of disease related to drug and alcohol issues to be about 5.4 percent worldwide. Staff in the planning and development department have had inquiries regarding a specific zone which would allow for a supportive recovery unit. To date, staff's response has been, to these inquiries, has been to suggest that a recovery facility could be located on a property zone for a community care facility. However, the province has specifically stated that this type of use is not appropriate fit with a community care facility. I'm going to speak a little bit more to that in a few minutes. So the proactive approach, therefore, is to outline the specifics under which council would consider a rezoning proposal to allow a supportive recovery facility on a site-specific basis. Supportive recovery can be defined as a facility providing a supportive and structured environment for individuals recovering from drug and alcohol addiction before they are ready to move into independent housing. And this would specifically exclude first-stage housing, which is considered to be like emergency services housing. So the following criteria would also be included in the zoning bylaw. That council may approve, "may" that is, a rezoning application for a supportive recovery facility on a residentially zoned property, subject to the following conditions. That it have sleeping accommodations for not more than six persons, which includes two onsite staff members. Not be permitted where there's a residential care use, a boarding use, or a home occupation use on the property. Not permitted within 250 meters of an existing supportive recovery use or a primary or secondary school. Have no indication that the building is used for a purpose other than residential use. And have a minimum of three parking spaces. Now, additional specific requirements could and would be need to be addressed in order to obtain a business license for a supportive recovery facility. At this point, staff is not making any suggestions to council on what those specific requirements might be, although count, staff did provide a list of some things that council may consider in a, in a subsequent report to update the business license bylaw. So some of these requirements could include, for example, a criminal record check, a copy of a business plan, credentials of the persons, providing supporting services, et cetera. An appendix A attached to my report dated March 16th provide a list of some of those ideas that could be included in an updated business license bylaw. The second thing we dealt with in this bylaw is the storage of, is rather recreational vehicle storage lot. Now, the current zoning bylaw allows for recreational vehicle storage lot to be located within six of the residential zone properties, including three of the single-family zones. Now, one of the conditions to allow for the use is that the property owner must have neighborhood consent. The bylaw also states that a hedge must be planted around a recreational vehicle, and a chain link fence is also recommended. Now, this can also include a sandy dump. Now, staff are recommending that this use be removed from the single-family residential zone as it's difficult to manage, is not compatible with residential zones. Excuse me. Operational staff, as to say, public works, support this recommendation to remove this use from residential properties. And with the approval of the amending bylaw, the storage of recreational vehicles, including boat storage, would only be permitted in conjunction with the primary use of the property, which is residential. So in other words, if you have a residence on the property, and you have your boat there and your RV, et cetera, that's fine. But what we're trying to exclude here is the use of a vacant property in a residential neighborhood just for the use of recreational vehicles. So the use of a property for recreational vehicle storage lot has been added as an accessory use to the medium and high-density residential zones to accommodate the storage of recreational vehicles for condominium owners. The bylaw amendment includes a new definition for recreational vehicle storage lot, which removes a requirement to have neighborhood consent and removes the ability to have a sandy dump in association. The third aspect that we're addressing in this bylaw is, has to do only with the C5 zone, which is a recreational vehicle slash park ground zone, campground zone. Now, this zone allows for the establishment of campgrounds and recreational vehicle parks, as well as licensed bed and breakfast and accessories uses. Within this zone, and when the zone was established, and the setbacks between individual recreational vehicles was not identified, so the proposed bylaw includes a minimum setback of 2.25 meters between recreational vehicle pads. And recreational vehicles will also be required to comply with the general setback for all of the uses within the zone. So the implications of these, this bylaw amendment include, for the community, consistent, clear, and effective regulations, which are the cornerstone of transparent governance and overall community health. Organizationally, staff in the planning and development department benefit from having clearly identified objectives and direction in the bylaws they refer to on a daily basis. The proposed update to the zoning bylaw has no implications for the budget. A public hearing would be required, which is where we are today. And the long-term sustainability of the community and the surrounding areas achieved through good planning practices that are proactive rather than reactive. So back to the agenda.
Thank you. Did you want to do a presentation that you have?
I'm going to, but are we going to do it where, any time? It's...
I think we should do it before we ask for, for people to speak.
Okay, sure. Amy, do you mind just bringing this up? So the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation here is just so that we're all on the same page in the room here with respect to what is included and what isn't included in the actual bylaw. So I did a quick summary in my report, but just to be clear, so there's five different sections, definitions, zone regulations, section 8.18, which is that recreation vehicle park zone, 8.28, which is the parks and recreation zone, and section four, which is general regulations. These are the only sections that we're amending at this time. So, next slide, please. Okay, so we're including a definition for first-stage housing, and this would mean a permanently staffed facility providing for the needs of the poor and homeless includes the provision of a temporary residence not exceeding three consecutive months, and may include meals, clothing, counseling, and vocational services for those persons temporarily residing therein. So right now, we do not have any zones in town that have this use allowed. Okay? Supportive recovery, which means a facility providing for a supportive and structured environment for individuals recovering from drug and alcohol addiction before they are ready to move into independent housing. Supportive recovery specifically excludes first-stage housing. Again, there are no zones in town that have this use specifically identified, and none are approved for this use with this amending bylaw. We go on then to amend the definition for community care facility to mean a building containing sleeping units for persons receiving care or assistance licensed or funded by provincial, sorry, or provincial agencies, including all care as defined and regulated under the Community Care and Assisted Living Act, and extended care as defined and regulated under the Hospital Act. But this would specifically exclude first-stage shelter housing and supportive recovery. Okay? So then again, as I mentioned just previously, we're, we're amending the definition of recreational vehicle storage lots so that we do not allow them on vacant residential properties within residential neighborhoods. And it would now mean a parcel of land or portion of land designed, developed, and maintained for the purposes of storing recreational vehicles. What this means is if a piece of property is zoned for recreational vehicle storage lot, that would be like something in industrial park, for example, that would be where you could take your recreational vehicle to, for storage, and it's meant specifically for that, rather than your neighbor next door just storing their vehicles and all their neighbors and all their friends' vehicles on their lot. Okay? So then, under section four, we're removing this recreational vehicle storage lot description, which is what I spoke to. Recreational vehicle storage lot may be permitted in any residential zone. And then again, this is about having the hedge and the chain link fence, and, and you'll notice it says, "Any lighting to illuminate this parcel shall be arranged so all the direct light reflect into the parking area." Again, this sounds very much like something you'd see in industrial park, which is why we're removing it from a residential zone. Okay? And then we're adding this, proposing to add this in this bylaw. Further statement under supportive recovery that council may approve a rezoning application for a supportive recovery facility on a residentially zoned site, subject to the conditions I just spoke of, which is that sleeping accommodation for not more than six persons, which would include two staff members, and by default, four people in care. Not permitted where there's a residential care use, a boarding use, or home occupation use on the property. Not permitted within 250 meters of an existing supportive recovery use or primary, secondary school. Have no indication that the building is used for a purpose other than a residential use. And again, have a minimum of three off-street parking spaces on-site. Okay, so section eight would remove, again, this recreational vehicle storage lot from the residential zones and add the storage lot as accessory use to the multifamily zones. So in other words, if you buy a condominium or a townhome, there could conceivably be in that complex a recreational vehicle storage area for persons living there. And then finally, under section 8.18, what we've done here is, in, in response to inquiries from a person looking to develop a recreational vehicle park slash campground, they were, they've actually, the ones that suggested that we make, we include this, and it's a great idea because it was omitted out into the bylaw, which is that there'd be a, an actual defined separation between the RVs so that, you know, they can't all kind of be compacted and pancaked in together. And that minimum setback between the recreational vehicle pads would be 2.25 meters. And then finally, section 8.28, which is parks and recreation, which applies to the municipally-owned properties, we add utility as a permitted use on those properties. So, just to throw a little bit of oil on the fire, so I think we need to go on to this next section because this is really, really important. And Mr. Remanko spoke a little bit to something similar to this today. So, in my report to council regarding bylaw 1085 point 105, staff provided information regarding Community Care and Facility Assisted Living Act. Staff had been advised by the provincial staff that because persons entering, entering a supportive recovery facility did not, strictly speaking, require care, that this act would not apply. However, a recent amendment to the provincial residential care regulation, which is enacted under the Community Care and Facility Living Act, added the following to the types of care that may be provided to adults in a community care facility. Substance use, being residential care for persons who are in care primarily due to substance dependence. Okay, so this is extremely important because under that section, which is section 20, subsection two of the Community Care Assisted Living Act, a zoning bylaw provision of the town does not apply to a community care facility if the bylaw complies to the town, to, to section 20 of the act. So what this means is that if somebody has licensed under the Community Care and Facility Act, that trumps municipal bylaws. And the requirements under that section apply only to those facilities that in fact have that license. And that means the facility can be used as a residence for no more than 10 people in care, not more, not more than six of whom are actually there for care. So you could have up to 10 people on that property, six of whom could be in, in care. Now, the facility would have to comply with all provincial and municipal regulations related to fire and health in a single-family dwelling, but they would not have to comply with zoning. So that is very important. I'm not sure if council requires any clarification because it's kind of late information for council as well.
No, just, just to be clear, the provincial license trumps any zoning requirements.
That's correct.
So just, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that point.
So they, so again, so to be licensed under the Community Care Facility and Living Act, you must comply with provincial requirements. The license is granted from the health authority, and that's, and the health authority is responsible for making sure that the checks are in place for all the credentials for any individuals employed by that facility. They're the ones that do the inspections of the facility, et cetera. The facility has to comply with municipal regulations with respect to fire and safety, so exit doors, fire safety rating, et cetera. But if they comply with the provincial licensing and are granted a provincial license, they can locate in any residential zone and any property in British Columbia.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, Mr. Remanko.
Can I just add one more point? So what Gina just spoke to was, was facilities that in fact are licensed. But the reality is that some businesses want to proceed with setting up some type of care facilities that are not licensed under the, under this particular act, the Community Care Act. So having definitions in the zoning bylaw that allow for council to deal with these types of applications are important to the decision-making process. If you don't have a definition for something to start, then you can't, you can't deal with it. So that is, that is the rationale for including a definition in the zoning bylaw. It also was the, the basis for setting up some type of decision-making criteria, which were the three or four points related to the numbers, you'll notice that the community care numbers are 10, six and four. Six patients, four staff. And the proposed non-licensed treatment of, of groups or, or individuals, the businesses that want to set up a, a, a care facility, we're proposing that the number be six, four and, four and two, if in fact we have to deal with it. But again, it's all may, it's not a shall, it's all a may structured within the zoning bylaw, that, that these are, these are items that the council, you know, may have to address in the decision-making process. So that's, I think, an important distinction as well, is that although the, the law provides for licensed ones, there, there's also a stream of business that attempts to operate without, you know, providing this level of care without going through the licensing process.
Thank you.
Yes.
And thank you, Mayor McCourtoff. One, one final thing is that as a planner, if someone were to come to my office and say, "We would like to look at locating X business on this piece of property," we would then take into consideration, as a professional planner, any other issues that might relate to that specific property and relate those to council, whether or not they were, you know, part of a bylaw or policy. That's our job professionally.
So, thank you. We do realize that it's very confusing. It seems to be adjusted daily, as you heard and has been in the Asouis Times and Asouis Today already. That was a phone message that we got this, that Gina got this morning. So things do change, but today what we're going to do is hear your comments. We are not going to decide on how to proceed today. We are going to listen, and we are going to allow each of you who wish to speak a chance to, to state. You've heard that at five minutes maximum, and Mrs. Hilsen is going to keep track of that, five minutes, and if you wish, you may speak again at the end. Yes?
Can I just add to, just, because the elephant in the room is the fact that, yes, there was a proposal that, of a supportive care facility, and, and just in terms of keeping the meeting going, so just to make sure, we will not take any discussion about that particular location. This is a generic discussion on the regulation that's being proposed within the bylaw.
All right. So I'm going to identify the correspondence received, and, and then we will get on with allowing people to make public presentations. So I have several letters and emails, an email from, do I need to read all of these? Okay, Lyle Warmington on March 18th, a letter from Lyle Warmington, March 21st, an email from William Baird Blackstone dated March 27th, an email from Ian Wells dated March, April 5th, an email from E. Rubinek dated April 6th, email from Deb and Bob Sherwood dated April 9th, an email from Tammy and John Iverson dated April 9th, a letter from Wydella Dulcetta dated April 9th, an email from Pam Sharwin, I apologize if I've got the names wrong, and Larry Inglethorpe dated April 10th, a letter from the owners of Cactus Flats, email from Carol and Tim Byrd dated April the 11th, a letter from Ken and Karen Seben dated April the 11th, a letter from Lyle Warmington dated April the 11th, a letter from Cy Mercelli dated April the 11th, a letter from Casa Del Mia Oro Resort dated April the 11th, an email from Greg Swatzky dated April 12th, a letter from Rhonda and Dave Hennington received April 13th, an email from Tara Swatzky dated April 13th, an email from Anita Hendricks dated April the 13th, and an email from Jamie Harper dated April the 15th. So those are the ones, I believe they're included in the package of, that you, that is available and has been passed out. I'm now going to, to ask if there is anyone who would like to speak, and we do have a speaker's list. And I will go by that list as to when you signed in. Please make sure that you, that you come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Thank you. And, and address the chair. Thank you. So we will have, first on our list is Lyle Warmington.
Thank you, Mayor McCourtoff, council. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Name and address?
My name is Lyle Warmington. I live at 19 Bayview. The, I'm sorry, somebody else's pen. I stand before you today to respectfully request that any ruling on the proposed amendment number 1085, point 105, is held in abeyance until either one of two things take place. The Town of Asouis has completed their OCP review and properly heard from all the residents in Asouis currently owning residentially zoned property. The second thing is, I would hope that the provincial government has implemented, implemented provincially regulated standards for addiction treatment and evidence-based treatment procedures by them. We have all seen the TV reports and read the newspaper reports detailing the many serious problems regarding unregulated drug recovery houses in B.C. If we do any changes to our existing bylaws before we get the anticipated sweeping changes to the regulations and licensing to these types of houses, we will be wasting our tax dollars and our staff time. Obviously, we spent hours so far, and going to spend many hours more if that goes through. Will we have to redo everything we do today with amendments and so on? I think we need to look at regulation and licensing requirements again. I think what we've proposed here is way too loose and has too many loopholes and possibly won't fly. I would say, let's make more information available to the homeowners and possibly set up a, a community committee that has input from medical professionals, not just townspeople, but medical professionals, all the staff, everyone included. We've never had any information, 100% of us here, didn't really even know that there was going to be anything like this coming up. So I would say to put it in abeyance, at present, the provincial ministry of health and the newly formed ministry of mental health and addictions, in collaboration with the regional health authorities and the First Nations health authorities, are working to develop... to develop and revise the provincial regulations, as we've just heard. The, they're going to hopefully set standards and provisions for evidence-based treatment, not just unregulated ones that go in and sell snake oil and say, "Hey, you're healed." You need something that's a little bit more forceful or, I don't know, that just, it makes more sense. The, hopefully that the, the government reports are going to be forthcoming. The, there's certainly been enough in the news lately about opioid treatment centers and all the problems they're having in Surrey and Dapplesford, Chilwellak, every darn place. Do we really need to invite it here? That's without more input and more information available to us. I realize that this amendment doesn't relate to one specific property, but the amendment seeks to give council the ability to approve an application for rezoning of any home in any residentially zoned area in the whole of Assoius, if they meet the requirements for six people and the three parking spaces. The, the term "may approve rezoning application" I believe is improper and it should be changed or deleted because it's discretionary, discretionary, sorry, by putting it into a, a regulatory bylaw. It confuses what's allowed and what isn't allowed. So we have to straighten that out. There's also five points listed in the approval conditions. There was no safeguard or no provision in that to safeguard children playing in a public park, as there is for the 250-meter exclusion for children in a public school. What's the difference, public school, public park? The, what's to say that the development, sorry, that, that the safety and well-being of the children is, is its priority? So what about the children of Assoius? That's, these criteria, I believe, are inadequate and don't give any residents the comfort or the say whatsoever, and as long as the property meets these suggested criteria. I've, I've attached with my submission today, an appendix that came from a friend of mine who happens to be a zoning and, and planning expert, 40 years of experience, he has a master's degree in urban planning and so on. He's listed a number of recommendations that I think are very pertinent. I wouldn't read them, of course, obviously. It's, my layman's language and his expert language are a little bit different, but I would hope that that would be read by everyone concerned, because I think it's, it's very relevant to what's going on today.
Thirty seconds?
Okay. So I just want to say thank you very much. And we know that there are currently, they've talked about it, that there's been currently some illegal ones that are, that are up and operating now here in Assoius against our bylaws. So formal complaints have been submitted and we would hope that immediate action would be taken on those and that would be taken care of. So thank you very much for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we do have your letters. We have, we have them and we have read them. Thank you. Next, we have Barry Reed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Barry Reed and I'm a resident at 580 North McDonald in Burnaby. I've come today, I'm a frequent visitor to Assoius, and I'd like to voice my opposition to the proposed changes to bylaw 1085.105, 2018. We are well aware of the horrendous problems that the opioid crisis has created and the need for dramatic changes to assist and support recovering addicts. There are now recommendations for the province to develop and revise regulations for all treatment facilities and services. Currently, the bylaws in Assoius do not allow for supportive recovery housing in residentially zoned areas. It therefore seems premature to change or amend the bylaw 1085.105 prior to more definitive information from the province regarding guidelines for full regulation, licensing, and monitoring of supportive recovery housing programs. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Ken Seben.
My concern, a lot of it has been addressed.
Name and address, please.
My name's Ken Seben, 23 Bayview Crescent. This is my 50th year as Assoius resident. Let me just say also, I'm a general contractor who's built hundreds of houses for retirement people who wish to come to Assoius to lead a relaxed, comfortable life and leave the big city in either Vancouver, Calgary, or Edmonton. And, you know, the zoning of, that we're speaking to today affects all single-family dwellings and other single-family resident zonings in the town. And with a lot of the people, our average age is 61 in Assoius. Most of my clients in, say, 300 houses I've built, most of them have been between the ages of 88, 60 and 88. So, you know, the stress on them when they get a difficult situation beside them is very unhealthy, too. And that impact has to be looked at as, say, site-specific in town in the zoning is nice, but how, what, what in order would you provide to say, "Okay, that site's not a good site?" So we'd need definite sort of guidance, recommendations of what is a proper site. And, you know, with tourism, across the street from where we live, Goodman Park, kids are playing there all day, the other tourists are up the east, east side Lake Shore. And there, hundreds and hundreds of people walk behind our house every day. And they, they try to, you know, have a safe environment, but people get worried about, of course, children, no matter what nowadays. And it's another issue that they have to be concerned with. So the site-specific would have to be, you know, very carefully done because we are a tourist town. We get hundreds of thousands of dollars from the government every year. And as I say, the, the, the residents that come here are retired and they're, they're looking for, you know, a relaxing, peaceful environment in a neighborhood. So, you know, that is a sensitive item that has to be looked at, since a lot of the information has already been said. But when you look into the inputs also with, with health officials, RCMP, residents, fire department, I was on the Assoius Fire Department for 26 years and I was training officer and I was on EHS ambulance for eight to 10 years. So I've seen lots of overdoses and lots of deaths, lots of car accidents. Two years ago, or less than two years ago, I saved an opioid that was dying, he was pretty well lights out, and we brought, I brought him back with another fellow that worked for me, until ambulance got there and shot him with Narcon. So, you know, it's prevalent in town, there's lots of drugs in town. RCMP know where the drugs are, but usually it's not much they can do about it. So they go in, go to jail for a while, or go in and get probation and they're out again. So with the government creating that new ministry last year for, for drug rehabilitation and alcohol addiction, it's being again downloaded to, to the council here and every other council in the province. So it's probably, you know, they want it fixed, but then they don't want to be the ones that fix it. So, you know, it's, it's an awful responsibility for you guys. And, you know, so I think, you know, with all the other towns and cities that are going through the same challenges, there has to be a consensus of, of direction that they're going in, so that, you know, everybody's on the same page, basically. Because it doesn't matter what town you're in, same drug. So I know people need help on recovery and they deserve a well-planned, secure setting and, and help for their problems. So I'm not, I'm not against, you know, any, anything to do with supporting people that are in need of recovery, but it's also part of the town that also deserves the same type of respect or treatment or, or responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Wendy Burkhart.
My name is Wendy Burkhart and I live at 45 Bayview Crescent. I came here to speak specifically about a property that was featured in the Penticton News and on the internet, but now I have to speak generically, so I'll try to dovetail it to generics. A rehab center is a very good thing, but around high-volume traffic, it is not that great an idea. And with 250 meters away from school, well, maybe it should be that and a little more near a liquor outlet or a dog park, which is family-oriented. I mean, Kelowna has needles in their park. City Park is not the beautiful place it used to be. And all we need is for some little dog to go sniffy-snuffling around, and that's what dogs do, and get a needle in its paw, nose, and with social media the way it is, it is going to impact, or a little child on a picnic with his parent negatively on Assoius. And Assoius' economy is driven by tourism. And as I said, we've seen things blow all out of proportion on social media. That is a very real effect that could have on our town if we are very, very careful as to where we designate this help for people that desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cy Mercelli.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilors, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cy Mercelli. I live in 8301 Quince Lane. I wish we had, particularly myself, that this correspondence, which was package given to us, in my view and legality of the community charter, we should have it prior public hearing, so there could not be confusion. Second thing, because it's hard to follow one way or the other way. It's too many ingredients, not enough. Second thing, in my view, so only amendment by law, the one we are introducing today, 1085 dash 105 to 18, particularly supportive recovery housing facility on residential zoned, R1, single-family occupancy. As it was stated, it's a town of Assoius is calling housekeeping improvements. Unfortunately, this will become nightmare for single residential zoned families. For the record, that we need a new OCP. And in my letter, stated to Director of Planning about council as a new mandate, I would like to clarify, Madam Mayor and councilors, that meant for OCP, because six months period, there is a new elections. For the record, you have a legitimate mandate to do one way or the other way. As for the record, again, today as of speaking about OCP, Assoius Community Planning, 21 years ago, it took, it took four years, town of Assoius at the time, to adopt. Started 93, finished 97, as of June 16th. I went door-to-door, 89% of single residential occupants, it was against the duplexes and multifamily in their neighborhood. Unfortunately, three to two, two councilors yes, the other two councilors no. Mayor Shill decided that should be adopted about that rezoning. Now, my particular concern, storage and recreational, that's part of it, but my concern is 4.22 supportive recovery, which will end up in our, every residential zone. And particularly, I would respectfully, I'm asking Madam Mayor, councilors, point three, not permitted within 250 meters, which is schools and other, it should be as well public parks. There are so many parks, Lions Park, where I look the properties, they have an empty lot, then we have a Goodman's Park and Kinsman Park. It's all occupants, single family, young families with the kids. And if I may, I would like to thank publicly Ken and Karen for excellent letter, which was an eye-opening for every resident. We're talking, we are forming each other. They didn't know about that, about this particular stuff, zoning by law. And as well, I would like to thank Assoius Time for publishing their excellent letter. And please, Madam Mayor, I wish you all the best, save our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, that's the one I'm reading, it's June, I believe, I believe copy with Mr. Remanko, that's about zoning. That's why I said that I hope doesn't take four years, new zoning by law.
Thank you. Mr. Mercelli, I believe, just a minute, Councilor Rhodes has a question.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mercelli, for your comments. Just for clarity, you brought up a statistic of 89% and some door knocking you did.
Actually, with the signatures, I walked, it was paraguffed, especially we, the residents of single-family residential opposing multiple duplexes. In a 89%, I went door-to-door, in my neighborhood where I live, Quince Lane, Gayla Crescent, 87, Pinat Pond, 100%, they were for it, to protect.
Thank you for that. My question is, I don't want to miss anything.
Yeah.
I like statistics. Does that have any relevance to this bylaw?
It does have a.
Could you tell me what that relevance is?
A rather, because we are talking about OCP, which is protected, and we, as of today, we are protected with the OCP, that single-family residential can have only one, or maybe duplexes family, not the recovery houses, not the other stuff, who's going to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's why we need a new OCP, at least we know, what we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barry Demery. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mayor and Councilor. My name is Barry Demery. I'm representing Casa Del Mio Oral, which is addressed at 5401 Lake Shore Drive. Drive, and I'm a resident of Ossoys. Um, I'm also speaking on behalf of the management of Long Beach. I'm speaking on behalf of the Stratocouncil of Island View Resorts. So behind me are the owners of those institutions, so there's another two-hundred people behind me that I'm speaking for. Uh, we are deeply concerned about the zoning bylaw amendment, ten-point, uh, ten-eight-five point one-oh-five. It's not simply a housekeeping amendment, it will have a profound effect upon this little town, and we are shocked that it is in a third reading without any sort of evaluation of the effect on tourism in this town. Uh, as a resort, Casa de Mila Oro is convinced that a recovery home will have a negative impact on tourism for resorts and tourism for the town of Ossoys in general. Um, and we would, um, if it is, if a recovery home is established in proximity to any resort, uh, we would ask that you postpone a third reading of this matter until, um, you consider it with due diligence and, um, or if necessary during the official community plan, period. Tourists come to Ossoys to relax in a safe, hospitable environment. The close proximity of a recovery home to any resort in this town will undermine the very reason that families and snowbirds come to Ossoys. Our resorts, beaches, parks, waterfront, and busy tourist streets are clogged with young, young children and teenagers playing and also going to and from school. A recovery home should not be in close proximity to these activities and in close proximity to a resort in this town. Snowbirds, as you all know, are a conservative group of people. They have, um, allowed this town to prosper during the slow winter months. They will take their business elsewhere. As a result, we have always had, already had an impact at our resort because of that. They have told us, if a recovery home is established near our resort, they will go elsewhere. Therefore, I would make the request that if you are considering this bylaw amendment, that since you have stated that a recovery home cannot exist within two-hundred-and-fifty meters of a school, we would, um, like you to also add that it should not be established within two-hundred-and-fifty meters of a resort community, within two-hundred-and-fifty meters of a public beach, within two-hundred-and-fifty meters of a public park, and within two-hundred-and-fifty meters of publicly accessed waterfront. Uh, in addition, any reputable owner of a recovery home would know that the establishment of a recovery home near a resort community is not good for the town of Ossoys. It is also not good for a recovery home. It does not present that kind of peaceful, tranquil environment necessary for recovery from addiction. As you all know, if you've been by our resort, um, there is a great deal of boisterous, loud behavior that involves alcohol, parties, uh, weddings. We do not feel that a, um, recovery home, uh, should be located anywhere near that environment because it does not in any way, uh, create an environment conducive to recovery from addiction. Uh, so as I made in my submission, uh, you, you would not consider putting a recovery home near a safe hub, uh, Boston Pizza, the watermark. You should not consider putting a, um, recovery home anywhere near a resort community in this town. Um, it's been stated, and I know this has been emphasized by other speakers, that, um, recovery homes have not been successful in places that they have been established, that other municipalities are grappling with the difficulties of these recovery homes. And I won't, um, waste my time reemphasizing that. But as you know, that the, um, a recent D.C. Coroner's report stated that the present model for support of recovery homes is not working and has urged the province to address these concerns and develop new guidelines. So in summary, very quickly, um, Ossoys is a small rural community heavily dependent upon tourism for jobs and prosperity. Uh, the town council has an obligation to all residents of the town of Ossoys to protect tourism and to ensure the safety, the safest possible environment for the residents of Ossoys and for the tourists that come to this town. The reality is that this, uh, town of Ossoys is not Surrey. It is not Mission, uh, and a recovery home in an environment close to our resorts would be very damaging. We therefore ask, um, that the town council approach this issue with increased due diligence and...
Time.
Thank you.
Time.
Thank you.
With increased due diligence, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, did you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
So I, I just want to, we've had a lot of speakers, including yourself, talk about what the provincial government's looking at and encouraging, um, the provincial governments to look at this model of, of, uh, recovery centers and, and what would be more effective. But I just want to make sure you and, and the others understand, um, that where we sit right now, uh, the province can hand out licenses and give, uh, these licensees the ability to open in whatever residential areas, uh, they'd like. I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear.
And that's why we're requesting that, that if you are considering bylaw amendment, that that bylaw amendment have those severe restrictions in them to protect the resort communities.
It wouldn't matter.
And it may not, it may not work, the province may rule that.
Well, but, but, it does overrule it.
Yeah.
And, and it's not something we're, uh, I'm stating as something we can hide behind. It's something that, quite frankly, I, I think is questionable, but I just wanted to make sure that it's clear because it is new information.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. And, uh, our next speaker is Brenda DeRoche.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Brenda DeRoche, Street H-two-two, thirty-third Street. And I just want to make it clear, I'm here as me. I wear lots of hats in town, and I was asked if I'm coming on behalf of residents for healthcare. I'm not, I'm just here for me. I just wanted to make that clear. Um, as Mike just spoke to when I was sitting, listening, um, what I wanted to just say was I was a licensed daycare in this town under Community Care Facilities Act for twelve years. That Community Care Facilities Act trumped anything the town, I didn't even have to have a business license. I operated for twelve years legally under the Community Care Facilities Act. And I think a lot of people are confused about that, and I should have done a submission about that, but I didn't, and I'm sorry, so that's why I'm here today. And I think people are confused about that, that the government, under the Community Care Facilities Act, can trump anything this council wants to do. Now, having said that, I, I have a couple suggestions that I would like, um, considered that have been thrown out here. Um, so I believe we should do an OCP review before this amend, before these changes are done. That's just my personal opinion. Also, um, my brother, fifteen years ago, went through a very successful support recovery home program. It was a very quiet, I would say, mountainous region. It wasn't a busy tourism family area. I think that that's part of the reason they're not being successful in Surrey, Coquitlam. So I, I don't really think our, our town would be a successful place to have that because we have all the tourism and we, we're a busy, we're a bustling town. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, I went through that on a personal basis, and it was successful because of where it was. It was a tranquil, quiet, they had gardens, they had, you know, and there's certain areas in this town that what I don't feel would be successful. And as part of that, I think under the, um, four-point-two-two, where it says two-hundred-and-fifty millimeters from a primary school or secondary school, I would like to see added any licensed family daycares, because that can be in any residential area of our town, any licensed daycares, period, so that, you know, they'll see this daycare center. The community center, Sonora Center, so any residential facilities, so that would be Desert Park, that would be Sonora Center, um, pickleball courts, tennis courts. Those are things that, you know, clients to our supportive recovery home would maybe have access to, but I think we need to be careful, and I think if it's stated right in our, in our bylaw amendments, that those, you know, that's protecting us. But keep in mind, the Community Care Facilities Act can trump all of that. But, and then, of course, public parks, beaches, schools. So in closing, my little comment was that I think we just really have to be careful as residents, that we don't come down on town council for this because it's kind of out of their hands right now. And just because I was a licensed facility for twelve years, I know it's totally different, but the government has the say. I mean, I was asked by people years ago, why don't I have a business license? Because I didn't have to. Community Care Facility Act will trump anything. Having said that, I think, you know, we have to wait for the government for some guidelines, and I think we do have to have a strong bylaw in place, um, you know, outlining all the concerns of residents. And it's been mentioned here about the tourism and seniors and snowbirds, but we have to forget, there's lots of families here that want to stay here, and we have families that want to come here. So we want to make sure our residential areas are friendly for snowbirds and seniors and families, because we need families to keep growing. If we don't keep growing and develop, we'll see us, we're not going to be anything but a senior community, and I, for one, stand up for families. So I would like to increase our school populations and our families, so if we don't have, if we can't protect our residential areas for our families and future families, then I think we're going to be in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your perspective. Um, that is the, uh, that's the end of my list, but is there someone else who would like to speak? Birgit, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilors. I'm sorry that I didn't go on your list. My name is Birgit Arnstein, I live at eight-zero-one-nine Bedet Drive. I come with a slightly different perspective of my, um, background. I'm a registered nurse. I have worked in detox centers all over downtown Vancouver, so I know a lot about detox. I also know about recovery homes. Um, I, I agree that when you're looking at this, first of all, it would be nice to be able to control the licensing so that you know that the people that are working in recovery facilities are properly trained, and that hopefully is going to be part of the guidelines that come from the province. That said, um, I'm going to probably be ruled out of here.
Uh-uh, we don't allow it.
I think that there is a place for recovery homes. I don't think we have to be nimbly completely about it. People are so afraid of drug addicts coming. Well, I'm sorry, but your next-door neighbor could very well, at this moment, be shooting up or whatever. It happens, and in a recovery facility, it will not be happening, if it's a properly-run recovery facility, that they do not allow drugs in there. Um, I, I just want that clarified for anyone, and one need not to be afraid of these people because they could be your neighbors. This is, this is a different perspective. I do agree that having, um, a facility near a public park, um, if these people are going off grounds, going to a public park, that wouldn't be the best idea, particularly, they smoke a lot. I'm sorry, but this is a generalization, but a lot of people who are using drugs or recovering from drugs, smoke, and that's not a good environment for children right there. As far as the people who live in resort areas and are fearful of exposing people in a recovery house to the use of alcohol, partying, a recovery house is designed to teach people how to live in the community. The moment they leave that recovery house, they will be going into the community. One hopes that they will have learned how to cope with a party going on next door. Um, that's all I have to say.
And thank you for your perspective on that. Is there any, is there anyone else who would like to speak for a first time? Uh, I'm just going to check first, Brenda, to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak. Okay, Brenda, did you have something to add?
Sorry, I just forgot in the bottom of my list about the camping. Um, I was wondering, and I wrote a question down here, did the staff in their report make any, um, comments about the current campgrounds? Are they within that two-point-two-five? Current campgrounds that we have here in Ossoys? Because we, you know, I'm born and raised here, and we've lost campgrounds all the time, and I'm wondering, the ones we have now, are they within that bylaw? Does the staff include that in their report?
I don't know. Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Any, um, operation that's existing would be what we consider groundfathered, right? So...
I was curious, are these resorts then going to have to go and review?
No, and just to be clear, there's actually only one property in Ossoys that has this zone that's undeveloped.
Okay. I just, that was a note on my paper after all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes?
Someone else is...
Well, Mr. Warmington, you had your hand up first.
Thank you. I'd like to just add. Thank you, Mayor McCordough, but, um, I just wanted to add that we seem to be getting a little bit broad reaching into our submissions and our conversations. What, the reason that we were asking, or I was asking for a postponement or, um, a delay of any kind of decision today, was because of so many different types of recovery agencies and what they supply. Some, you have to have three beds, some you have to have two beds, you can't go over six, and some, with a two-bed situation with two staff, you can't go over ten if you've got multiples. We need more input, we need to wait for the provincial guidelines because they are supposedly, I'm not the expert here, but from what I understand, from talking to people that are experts, they are trying to make it so that all of them are licensed and registered. Now, you don't have to be registered. Right now, we operate under, under the same kind of legislation that regulates daycares. Well, that's not broad enough for what we're trying to do. So, delay, stop this now, and get more input, whether it's medical professionals, private, whatever, but it needs more, that's why we're asking for the delay.
Thank you. Yes. Counselor Campbell.
Just a question, I think it was you on your previous time up here, uh, we're talking about social media and, and the effects, and, and would you agree, I mean, we talk about the, the broad reach of social media well outside of our community and how it reflects our community, and you stated that, you know, it, this could certainly affect visitors coming and, and the way people see our community. Would you agree at the same time, this has nothing to do with any position for me on this, that, um, how we comment on social media and our reasonings for our positions can have the same effect the other way, um, with the amount of people and families that have been touched by, by, um, by substance abuse and things of that nature? And I just, would you agree that we have to be careful with commenting on, on either end and how we, um, how we're perceived to feel about, uh, people with these challenges?
The, firstly, um, it wasn't me to comment about social media.
Okay.
However, um, my family and I have, excuse me, one second, I just got to take a breath here.
Sure. I think we read about something in the, in the paper, in the...
I have, I have personal experience.
Yes. Right.
And, um, it's very, and that's why we can't screw it up.
So, we certainly understand. Yes.
Thank, thank you for that.
We do understand, yeah. Mr. Demery?
Can I just have a quick rebuttal?
If you come up to the microphone.
Um, my first rebuttal is that the, all the experts that I have spoken to, don't you laugh at me, just toss up the word expert, all the experts I have spoken to have, um, said that the environment around resorts is not an appropriate environment for the establishment of recovery. Given that we all know that the relapse rates unfortunately are extremely high, somewhere in the neighborhood of between forty and sixty percent, and so that does create a situation where there is the danger of drugs and drug paraphernalia around recovery homes. And so I reaffirm the idea that we do need, although we could be totally overridden by the province, we do need, if we're going forward with the bylaw, to put the restrictions, like that two-hundred-and-fifty meters from public parks, from resort communities, from public beaches, and publicly accessed water.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I will ask again if there is anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Seeburn? Mr. Seeburn?
I'd just like to know with the provincial government, do they hand you a policy where they say this is the direction we would like you to go? What, what do they demand from you? Or can you just say, we want more information, we don't have enough information from you? You know, when you do get, get handed down from the provincial government, do they write a note and say, you know, this is going to all of municipalities, this is what we want you to do?
It's not that, it's not quite that detailed.
Mr. Menko, would you like to comment on that?
Well, I think very generally, in terms of the relationship between the province and the municipalities, that doesn't happen very often. Sometimes they will ask for, there'll be some type of a consultation process in around, you know, specific issues. This, this is the, the relationship between them permitting a supportive recovery care center and then trumping municipal bylaws is not a new issue. And I just don't have it in front of me. I know that at UBCM, that's the, you know, the municipalities have brought this up and have put it to the province before about the need to respect local jurisdictions in this matter. But this is not something that has moved very quickly at all. And, you know, so we're caught in an environment right now that doesn't give us a lot of options. Now, I think that, and I don't want to presuppose, counsel, but I know that certainly, you know, we talked about next steps, and there may be some next steps relative to that council may want to take in terms of making the provincial government aware of the, the need for this to be readdressed within, with the municipalities having more say in what happens in their communities.
Can I answer that a little more or less politically correct? It's called a provincial download to the municipalities so the province can look like they're doing the right things to deal with an epidemic while downloading the real issues down to the municipalities.
Well, I said that earlier when I was up there the first time. I said, they want it fixed, but they handed down, they downloaded to you guys to do something about it. So really, you have, I mean, at UBCM, I mean, it must be brought up, I mean, with all the municipalities throughout the province. You know, I'm a provincial voter like everybody else is here, and I'm a town voter too, and I don't like it. You know, I don't think that our town should have to make that type of decision without a certain amount of guidance from the ministry, and they created a new ministry to, you know, specifically targeting this problem that we've got now with opioid crisis.
Mental health was the, mental health is the big, is the big thing.
And addiction problems. So, you know, even if you say they trump you, just because they trump you doesn't mean you have to say, oh, I'm trumped. You know, you can stand up and say, you know, screw you guys. This is our attitude. We're from Osoyus, and we don't like it.
It's a job for the residents, but yeah.
Well, that's a job for the residents. And, you know, more residents throughout the province, if, if they actually know what, what this is, they'll vote them out. I mean, that's what votes are for. So, you know, it has to be handled, and I don't like the idea of them downloading it to, to our municipalities.
Let me be clear, though. The, the addition to the ministry of mental health and addictions is a positive thing. I don't want to come across as completely negative.
I'm not, I'm not a negative.
No, no.
And I said that there is problems with it.
It's a complex problem. And where the frustration is, is when downloads happen that are left for us to deal with before there has been much consultation or, or discussion.
My, my daughter has a stepson in rehab right now, and it's the third, the second time he's been in.
Believe me, this town council knows how to deal with, write letters. We have been very proactive in the last few years to the education ministry, to the health ministry, to roads. We're good at writing letters, and they do write back whoever, somebody in there eventually does.
That's what I'm, I'm supporting them.
Yes. And we will, we could certainly look at doing that here. We, as I said, we, next steps is to look further at the submissions that we have had today to look at all the letters that have been written. We are not making any kind of a decision today, and it will, we will need to have a report from, from our staff, and then we will look at how we deal with it. So there may be several things that we can do. And several people have mentioned about the OCP review. I believe the last one that we, that I remember we had was in the early 2000s, 2003 and 2000 --
2007, it was.
Might be slightly before then.
2008.
2008? Okay. So that was 10 years ago. It took many years to go through that. So it's not easy to say, wait for an OCP review, and then we'll do it. We probably need to. And an OCP, quite frankly, is a living document. It is not, this is, you're stuck with this for 10 years. We make changes, same within the regional district. There are changes are made often to reflect new ideas and new ways of looking at things. So definitely, that's part of our, of our job to look at that.
Well, I think everybody that has been here today isn't here opposing council's decision. We're just here to have an open discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think you guys are all doing a good job.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask again, is there anyone else? Yes. Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Okay, you should have said that this way. I was the one that spoke about social media.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Do you know, I just --
My name is Wendy Burkhart.
Yes.
And I reside at 45 David Pressman.
Yeah, we have you.
Previously, I heard ask you about social media. I spoke about it. Was there a question you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're conscious of, for the same reasons you brought it up, whether, whether the reasons are valid or agreeable to everybody as to where these recovery centers are set up, to be careful, would you agree that we have to be careful in our language of our reasons why? For the same reason as people being turned off of a community that might seem insensitive. Looking at some of the social media comments as this issue's come up in the last month or so, and it's, I respect everybody's coming forward and giving their reasons why we should or shouldn't have a recovery center in a certain areas and for all the specific reasons. But I've also read a lot of concerning things about, you know, automatic crime increases and, and safety issues and all sorts of things. And with the amount of people who have been touched by, by addiction within family, extended family, or friends, that it could have the same negative effect either way you look at it.
Yes, it can just go viral. One negative incident, and snowbirds, they're a clique too. Something bad happens to them, a whole community knows about it, something good happens to them. This is a good place to go, we're a good town, it's nice, it's a two-inch sword, social media. Very dangerous.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you all for taking the time out to be here. It really shows that you have a concern for our town. And there was a lot of great ideas that I'm sure staff has written a lot of them down, and hopefully will incorporate some of your ideas when she brings a new recommendation forward. And as you've heard, there's no decision tonight. We don't meet again for three weeks at council, so it'd be three, four weeks, a month before anything would actually be decided on.
I'm just going to, Counselor Youngberg.
Ditto's to Counselor King. Thank you all so very much for all the energy and effort that you've put into the submissions that you've given us. And from my perspective totally, they're taken very seriously. And me above all of some of the concerns, I've had some experience. It's extremely important that we listen, and I certainly have.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back and see if there is anyone else who wishes to speak. I'll ask for the second time if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue. And for the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Hearing, none. I will declare that this, this public hearing is over, and, and thank you all for coming. We appreciate your input, and we appreciate your interest in this. Could we have, do we have to have a motion to adjourn? No. Okay.